Meeting. Okay, so we already have an executive and we do have a need to add.
Recording in progress.
One, another one for contracts?
For contracts.
And what's the one we already have for contracts too?
Nope, this is for one of the legal litigation.
Yeah. And actually, I'd like to add one for personnel. So do we have a motion?
Move to adopt, adopt, adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we have meeting minutes of July 17th, liquor board minutes of July 17th, and then there are special meeting on July 30th. Did anybody have any additions or corrections on those minutes? Town managers' report.
Alright, signed the grant agreements for the fiscal year '25 grants and aid program for our annual ditching and stone lining along our gravel roads. And we also did a better roads grant for the installation of a culvert on Whipple Hollow. Those are both by the signs, so we have the grants in hand for that funding now. We're with the Markowskis and Rutland Northeast on a contract to store materials on the school out next to the town offices. I've actually included a copy here just so you guys can see it. This is the one they're working on the sewer line over here that they'll have a place for storing materials. So, the big concern was that with the school was that they would be gone by haunted house time. So there's actually something on there that says there can't be any materials during the time.
Okay.
Submitted a letter intent to Vtrans Municipal Assistance Program to apply for the FY25 Better Roads Category A Grant Road Erosion Inventory Program. We are eligible for $14,000 to reassess our road erosion inventory. And this is a requirement that falls within our municipal roads general permit that we have to do every year. But they keep giving us money to fix it, so it works out alright. Ann and I attended the Vermont Community Leadership Summit at VTC in Randolph yesterday. Alicia was there too. There was obviously a lot of talk about flooding with the northeast and everything up there, but we, Ann and I are both able to meet with some folks from USDA, DEC, Haley Perrow from Sanders Office, to talk about what we could look at for funding for extended sewer line. It looks like there's gonna be some money maybe coming out because there's still some arable left. So, we wanna try to get in the queue for that. We're gonna talk to Otter Creek Engineering to see if we can get our, some quick plans done for the sewer line, you know, extension on basically segment three from Plains to Kendall Hill. So, that would be a good one that we could, and USDA, we could, that qualifies for USDA funds too through the RD program. So, we'll be, we'll be reaching out to them to see what we can do and hopefully we can get some funding to extend this sewer, and then we can have some economic development. Highlight Apartments been busy with roadside mowing and continues ditching along Creed Hill. They also assisted Direct Department with setup for Pittsburgh Day. Just with that too, we're anticipating some heavy rain on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So, we've kinda just sort of spot checked some of the gravel right now, 'cause we know we'll be out with the grader after that. It's not gonna be good. Also included in here is the summary of the tickets written from PD. They wrote 104 traffic tickets last month. Unfortunately, we're still seeing excessive speeds throughout town even with more enforcement. So, but 104 in a month is a lot. Bridge 108 update, just their continuing installation of supportive excavation and demolition of the northern end of the existing bridge. That's all I have.
I just walked under, over the pedestrian bridge the other day. It's kinda cool to look under the bridge from that angle.
Yep.
Any questions?
Yeah, you wanna comment on the town office hours?
So, this is actually down in the further, that was a sort of a thing I wanted to put on there so you guys could read it, but we do have it on our business cycle.
So, couple of questions. So, we're talking, you're talking about running the sewer north. What about south on seven? Is there any?
So, we had, Vtrans were, you know, agreed to put the sleeves and the hangers in on the bridge, so we do have that capability. There might be a possible subdivision happening down that way sooner or later. So, we can. We have looked at doing water to Casello's building, 'cause they're moving their whole construction down there. So, that's something we'll be able to do quickly. But sewer would be a little bit more, you know, we'd have to, we'll get, but at least we can get through the bridge now without having to, you know, drill holes or anything. It's, it's ready to go. So, I think if folks are looking at subdivision and building houses, we can get sewer out there now.
Okay.
You're talking about south?
South, yep.
And when we drop, when we drop that water line in, if we do to Casello's, we'll make sure the sewer line gets dropped in there at the same time.
Well, so water goes, water goes all the way up to Rose, where Rose Apartments are right now. So.
Yeah, but round the corner.
It'd be nice to be able to drop sewer in, but we gotta go from the, we'd have to go from the bridge all the way up, and that's gonna be a little busy.
Well, no, just to play up there.
Just, you're digging it, put the water in, put the sewer in too, then it's, cap it, it's there if you ever wanna use it.
So, we can look at that day. We do have to have separation. I think it's 25 feet we have to have between water and sewer line. But I can certainly inquire about that. We'd make sure we'd wanna get our elevations right on that.
That far?
It's pretty far, yeah.
Now, that's real.
Yeah, well, usually they're on either side of the road. So, that's 20, well, that's 22 feet. So, or 50 feet actually. It's 50 feet, 22 foot of lane.
You still got that big culvert on the corner.
Yep.
It's gonna be pretty deep going through there.
Yep, we'll probably put a pump station in somewhere too, but.
Okay. I just, it just, you're digging it.
Yep. Yeah, I, yeah, I, you know, but it's worth looking into it, 'cause if we can get some funding for that on both directions, that's, that's a win.
Right. Roadside mowing, you mentioned that.
Yep.
We got that new big armorer. Are we using that?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Okay, 'cause it could, West Creek can use it. I mean, the brush is getting right out in the road.
Yeah, we've mowed, we've mowed pretty much everywhere twice already, and it's, weeds are growing like crazy this year.
Yeah, but this is, this, they haven't mowed this stuff. This is trees.
You can't see out of this driveway. That's what this is.
No, this is going by Hathaways. You gotta drive in the middle of the road to not get hit with trees.
Yep, on West Creek, alright.
Yeah, lift it up.
Although, no.
Well, yeah, no, it needs to be knocked back.
Yep, no problem.
It's, you know, and I'm not, it's not a complaint. It's just the fact, I realize stuff's growing like crazy. So.
Crazy.
Yeah.
That is.
That's, that's all I got.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, any select board member remarks?
Well, I'll zoom in. Yeah, short run start. Alright, so, got a call from Steve Wilk on the paving. I think just clarification of what went on is I guess what we're looking, he's looking for. And I.
We're gonna talk about that.
I think Dan wanted to discuss that as a contract item. So.
Oh, okay. Alright, okay.
Wow, you were fast. Get another one?
No, that's all I had.
Is there another written copy of the town manager's report? I don't have it in my package.
Not mine if you want.
Yeah, we can make a copy of it before we leave.
Yep.
I have three quick things. The first one you have, I'd like you to talk about. Can you talk about the depreciation and how that was reapplied the correct way this year? So, we had this discussion on this 140,000 in the sewer.
Sure.
If we could just have a quick discussion so everyone understands exactly what we did.
I'm sure Ann will be able to add more to it than I can, but we were told from our auditors that depreciation wasn't being calculated correctly on water and sewer. It's our enterprise fund, so they should show depreciation. So, we did it right this year. So, we have 140,000. If it's 141 or something like that, it's 140 or somewhere. Which helps us out too when we're applying for any funding from like USDA, or they wanna, they would make us have depreciation anyway to show that we basically have a savings in case we need to fix something after we've borrowed millions of dollars from them. So, and I can guarantee when, when we apply for our USDA, RD money, they'll be happy to see that we actually have some depreciation going on with the plan.
I'm sure Ann can add to it.
So, our previous auditors used to calculate it, but they would take the information given to them, which may or may not have been 100% accurate. We have, or last year, I gained control of our asset software, went through, made a lot of corrections and on what our assets actually were, because there were some that had been disposed of years ago. There were some that were not on there. So, I went department by department. And then this year, I added in our new assets and everything, did depreciation the right way, and again, double-checked all the assets with departments to make sure it was all accurate. So, the numbers are accurate as you're seeing them now. Previously, they did depreciation, but the auditors did it, and they based it on someone else's data and a funky spreadsheet that they might've been depreciating stuff that shouldn't have been, or were not depreciating things that should've been. So, it's been cleaned up, organized, and we have control of it here in the offices now. I go through and I'm the one that does the depreciation for everything with the help of the computer, but.
Depreciation on the physical plant?
It's on, it's on all of the physical equipment plant. Land can't be depreciated, just like for you and taxes and that thing. Buildings are over like 100-year lifespan, but you know, if we do building maintenance, or like vehicles get a new engine, you know, anything. I think we all did a cutoff of $7,500. So, if things cost $7,500 or more, they're a depreciable item. And they go in the asset spreadsheet, and then it's based on the number of years. We're doing vehicles at seven years, unless it's a fire truck, that one obviously a few more years. I think some of them are in that 20 or 25 years. But it's based on average lifespan.
So, when we said we had a extra at the end of the year of, how much did you say we were better?
For sewer?
No, for the end of the year, you had a total of 180 or something like that.
No, that's different.
That would be, general fund separate from the sewer and water. So, sewer and water, you know, we do the budgets.
So, that I did not understand our discussion. So, that's why I wanted this to clarify.
Yeah, so sewer and water, those are separate enterprise funds from the general fund. The general fund is what is voted on. The water and sewer is what the board sets for.
So, the general fund was to the better.
200-ish.
Almost 200.
Of course, we, you know, transfer station, a few employees, you know, that we don't have anymore.
We budgeted for you?
Yep, so, yeah, we came up.
So, that's a, that's a true dollar amount that's in that fund?
Yep.
Okay, I thought this 140 was part of.
No, no, it's totally separate.
So, well, yeah, but I, that's not what I understood when I talked to him. I thought that was part of this. So, now I understand.
The general fund includes highway. So, general fund is all your departments and highway. And then sewer fund stands on its own. Water fund stands on its own.
So, Ann, as an accountant, explain to me, our depreciation, we're just basically showing on paper, 'cause we're not using it for taxes like the rest of us use it.
It's a, it's a non-cash transaction.
So, yeah, it is, but it doesn't really do any more than just show on paper that depreciation. It's not something that, like, we would use for our taxes. Right, but explain how it affected the fund. The depreciation.
Well, we're on the red the first time in how many years in the sewer fund, so.
Out of the red.
Out of the red.
Okay. Is that 'cause the rates were raised, or is that, it's not because we depreciated correctly, is that what you're telling me?
Well, we've done quite a few things through the year.
Yeah, I understand that. The depreciation's something separate. It's just something showing correctly.
Correct.
Okay, that was a good discussion, 'cause when we talked, I was not clear on why that was over there, but I get it now.
Okay.
You need to hear things twice. I'm a little slow. Sinks in slow.
I'm sure that we're not gonna see that, you know, this year end with 200,000 in our general, you know, I mean, there were a lot of things that changed this.
Well, no, there was a lot of things that were changed that we budgeted for. So, that's understood. That's why I couldn't figure out where the 140 is. I got it now. Thank you for that. Just, I had at least 10 tax bill comments over the weekend, and none of them were positive, just in case anyone was wondering.
People still don't understand that we don't have any.
No, it wasn't anything to do with us. It was all about the state.
The agencies, right.
And the school.
Yeah.
Mostly the state.
Okay.
But I just wanna make a comment that I heard it.
Yeah, no, yeah.
I had someone come in today, someone I, a friend of mine that's in town, and came in and had a letter from the state that showed like the, their income sensitivity thing and stuff, and it broke it all down. And the letter was dated July 1. And I, after reading it, I noticed that it had, like it said, house, you know, whatever your house appraisal or assessment was for last year. So, it said for '23, '24, so FY24. And, 'cause she's like, "Well, it seems to be off by about $1,000." I'm like, "Wait a minute." I think that the letters went out, and I'm trying to confirm this, but we can't seem to get a hold of anyone at tax. It was before we even got to the school rate. So, all these letters went out. I think that they based them on last year's numbers. So, we're gonna try to confirm that and see, 'cause apparently they went out to, well, everyone that qualified for, you know, income sensitivity.
Which is a vast majority of the state, correct? It's like a lot. 60-some, 67%, right?
But that, that kinda, so then I started looking at our tax bill to make sure everything was right on that, you know, the numbers that were, I'm like, "It's not, uh, something's", the letter I think is causing some, some concern. So.
Well, I think there's a whole bunch of concern. There's a point in that comment that. The other comment I had is, two people told me they had close calls on the bridge. You cannot see the oncoming traffic coming south when you're coming off.
Oxbow?
Oxbow. They got all that equipment there. You cannot see through the bridge. And there were two close calls because you can't see. So, we've got, either we've gotta slow them down to a crawl coming that way, but that's too close. And I looked at it, and he's right. They got the, they got the rigs right there. You cannot see through. And the people are coming too fast towards the south and taking that corner.
Coming south.
Yeah. That's, well, they come, they come pretty fast coming north, but they have to put the brakes on. They usually make it. But, but the real problem is, people are pointing, I am, two people say, "I almost got hit," and I looked and looked and went, and all of a sudden, right there. So.
I'll talk to them about their equipment and see what they.
I think, I think that has to be addressed somehow there, 'cause that was a poor design, how they have that set up there. So, and I know that came up before, but that was two, two this week.
We've mentioned it to them a few times on just the corners and the site.
It's gotta be re-mentioned.
Yep. No, no, we'll go down and talk to them about it. The equipment would be a big one. I mean, you've got, you know, you've got massive excavators, and they had a drill there today.
The drill's right there. Drill block.
So, it's, I mean, they kinda got a drill where they gotta drill, but they could have flaggers there.
Well, I know that, but we're gonna have to.
They could do flaggers at Oxbow when they're like that.
Yeah.
Or they've gotta just get it slowed down a little more coming across.
We're trying, Mark. We're trying. I mean, the, the speed, the construction speed is 20.
I, I know, but that's not what they're coming around the corner at.
No, there's nowhere near 20.
Police are there most of the time.
Yep.
But people don't pay attention. So, where's our electronic board?
Our electronic board?
Yeah, that flashes. Where is it?
We don't have one.
Sure we do.
Electronic construction board?
No, they're talking about the, the speed part.
Oh, the speed limit side, it's in here. We're talking about that tonight, too.
No, no, no.
No, the speed side.
Oh, it's one of the ones. That one's up there.
Put it down there right before the bridge.
Yeah, we gotta, it's.
Start flashing.
Getting worked on. The batteries aren't holding charge right now.
Well, tell that little car to hurry up and do it. But I think you should put on that end and get it flashing 20, just to slow them down. That'll do something. We already got it, so.
Yeah, we can.
Anyway, that's it. That's all I got.
Okay.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, public comment.
During your standard.
Uh, no, you, whatever you're comfortable with.
For those who don't know me, I'm Brent Garo. I own 3018 US Route 7, which is Garo Auto Sales. When the sidewalks are refinished, or done through there, and roadwork was done, and the town did the sidewalk areas, whenever it rains, there's a large amount of debris, mostly gravel, that ends up in my parking lot. And I've, I never did this before any of that was done. Even when it rained heavy, wouldn't have that in the parking lot. So, it is quite a bit. I've called the town and been put through. The town manager has had the town crew come and clean it up once. He came and had them clean it up again. This happened again, and I called back, and to my surprise was the demeanor and which I got from the town manager, and the profanity that he used when he spoke with me. And that is causing for concern, because the way he spoke to me is not, I own two businesses and you don't speak to people that way. You don't, and then I said, "You can't talk to a pub, public taxpayer the way you are." This is over a phone call, 'cause I called and he called me back. And we could discuss it farther at some point, but the words that he used were profane, and it was unacceptable. So, and that went away, and, but I was initially told that they weren't gonna, he wasn't gonna do anything about it. 'Cause I said, "We have a problem here." I left a message, which I would wish he kept, and he could play it for you.
I can.
Yeah, I hope so. The, and just said, "We need to do something about this problem." And it persists. Now, he said he wasn't gonna do anything about it, but I came in to pay my water and sewer bill on Friday, and the town clerk's office is closed. I went to Ann, and she can't take a card. So, I went back to my office to get a check. I came back up, and Ann was not in her office. So, I had the check all ready to go, so I just motioned to Helen, and Helen said, "Come on in." So, I went in the town office to get my check and was, well, this is the first time, because rewind. There was a lady inside the office when I first came. A woman with white hair. She was in her office, and I met him in the hallway, and I was gonna go into Ann's office. And I said, "So, what are we gonna do about the problem?" And yes, I was, I was pointing my finger. And he said, "I guess you're gonna have to hire somebody." And then I said, "Well, you're really acting," and I said exactly what he called me, and he says, "There we're even." That's what he used, that's the way I was talked to in the hallway. Now, I'd like to get the lady's name that was standing there, where she had to walk between us during this altercation, which she paid the bill just before I was in there. Then I left to go get my check. And when I came back, that's when Ann was gone. So, I went in the town office, and I know Helen, and I know Liz, and was chit-chatting about, 'cause I had moved a vehicle for the town. I was talking about that, the haunted house and other stuff. He comes around the corner, stops, sees me, leaves, comes, he stormed back through the door, 'cause it was sitting there talking. Then he came back to, in what I call a threat, because he says, "You will not talk to me the way you did in the op, in there. You will come into my office and you'll have this. And you will not like the outcome if you do it again." And this is, Helen and Liz were standing right, were right there in the office, and this was heard. So, there were witnesses to that. And I find this very unacceptable for a person that works for this town to speak like that. I, like I said, I have two businesses. I would never talk to anybody that way. Not even a vendor. And I just think it was, it needs to be addressed. This man obviously has anger management issues. And, and I've talked to other people in just a small town, and I'm not the only one he's had problems with, and his anger has gotten away from him. And that was, I don't deserve to be threatened in the town office when I'm actually here paying my bills. So, that is where I, we'll leave that off, and I feel that we should have another discussion about this further, because I, I didn't, I felt attacked.
So, to clarify, you have two issues. One's gravel that's ending up down at your place?
Yes.
And the second one is with the condo.
Yes.
Okay. What would you like to say, Dave?
Well, nothing really. I mean, I, I, Ann was actually in her office when Mr. Garo was in the hallway pointing his finger and yelling at me. And I believe that I asked him three times to stop yelling at me and put his finger down. There was a woman that was in the hallway. I have the message on my phone that was from my voicemail in here that I can play from the original message. It went from the town to you, and that was where I got irritated that, you know, when someone comes in for the town, whether it's disgruntled taxpayer or someone else, and it's a town problem, we get it. You know, people are upset. It's the way it works. When it becomes personal, that's a different situation. And at that point, it became personal twice with Mr. Garo, and I didn't appreciate it. You know, we originally cleaned the gravel up as he said after we did the sidewalks, because I know Chad had been out there. They'd swept, there'd been some debris from the pavement and everything. Not a big deal. But this problem does not come from the road, which is a state road. It was actually a US highway. It's not ours. It's not coming from our sidewalks. It's coming from landowners up the road. It's not our problem, or not our fault that this is cause that there's, you know, we're getting heavy storm events. Debris and sediment goes downhill. That's just how it works. And I don't feel that it's the town's responsibility to clean up people's parking lots. And if we start to do that, how many are we cleaning up? I can play the voicemail if you wanna hear it, and, but let me just play it.
Hello, David. This is Brent Garo calling. Calling in regards to my parking lot in Garo Auto Sales. The front needs to be cleaned again, and looking to figure out what we're gonna do about this, because you're gonna be cleaning it every time it rains, unless we fix this problem. So, I need a call back. 802-236-5444. Thank you.
So, that was the first, that was the voicemail I'd gotten. I believe he.
Actually called Ann a couple of times.
Before that. Yeah, I probably shouldn't have called him what I called him, but after the conversation got a little heated up, it seemed that it was the appropriate thing to say. And I can tell you, it's the first time I've said that to somebody as a town manager. But this, people need to know where the line is too between it going from work related to personal. And when things get personal, it's not good.
So, if I understand that right, when the conversation was in the hallway, not in your office?
It was last Friday. I was walking down the hallway, and he was standing in front of Ann's office, and he's, something like, "You're gonna clean this up," or whatever. I'm like, "No, we're not." And that was when he was.
And it persisted?
Um, for, I don't know, 20 seconds maybe?
The whole conversation was less than two minutes, but I will say Brent was on the loud side. Dave didn't really raise his voice. He just said, and he did say, "If you will stop yelling and wanna talk, I'm more than willing to talk." And he did ask him to remove his finger, because he was pointing it, like right at Dave's chest.
So.
There was enough space for him to walk through us?
It's 'cause I backed up.
So, the, the situation first occurred when the sidewalks were redone in October?
I think it was before that actually, 'cause Brent had called me a time or two before that, and I had just reached out to Chad. I didn't go through Dave. I just reached out to Chad and said, "When you've got a free minute, can you just clean up the gravel?" And I didn't think anything of it at the time.
So, the gravel is coming from where, Mr. Garo?
The gravel comes right down, and before, there was, it went, it went another way. It just was diverted. What I wanted to do was fix the problem. I don't wanna keep doing.
So, the gravel's coming from the neighbor?
Yeah.
It's coming up the road. I don't think it's coming from, 'cause there are heavier stones that are in the neighbor's driveway. I think it's coming up farther.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you say you think it's up beyond your.
Up beyond, because the stones in the neighbor's driveway are good size, and I'm not getting those.
So, you think it's flowing down?
Yeah.
So, is it flowing down the sidewalk?
Yeah. It's flowing down the sidewalk, and then it's cur, it's coming right into the parking lot. And then.
There's no sidewalk in part of theirs.
Mazaroni's don't have one in front of theirs.
Oh.
Just that one section doesn't have it.
Just that one section.
But, I mean, I could see if rocks were flowing. Every time it rained heavily, it would maybe move, go further with the smooth sidewalk.
With the amount of rain that it had, I stopped and looked at, and from the snack bar, there's, yeah, the driveway is three-quarter inch stone, but the sand is washed away between But the sand is washed away between the sidewalk and the lawn area on the lower part of where the snack bar is. That flows down the edge of the sidewalk across Maseronis, deposits at Maseronis as well. And there, there might be a gallon of sand on the outside of Brent's-
Yeah, okay.
The reason I don't, I want to, when you have that type of gravel on top of the pavement and it keeps getting ground in, it's gonna destroy the pavement too. And I just not looking to do that. And there's quite a bit of traffic there, which I'm not worried about the traffic because I've said to the police department and I keep that light out front. I pay for that light that's on the telephone pole shining down. Because they stop a lot of cars there and I totally said, that's totally fine. And, but I'm gonna stop traffic going through there if all these stones are still there and they're getting driven into the parking lot.
Have you spoke to the two neighbors about the situation? Have you spoke to the two neighbors about the situation? Do you feel it's coming from two?
I don't feel it's Maseronis, cause they're too heavy. The stone, it's more sand and-
There's, there's gravel on top. It's an underburden of sand. And you can see the, the ruts from the snack bar going down the hill. And that's the kind of stuff that's being deposited in the parking lot.
What I'm saying is this did not happen before they changed the road. They changed that all the way up through there. And if there was just something to divert it from coming down and in and more straight, like I could, if it was on the side of the road, that would be a little bit different than coming, it's flowing right in. And it's just a mess.
It'll be fixed when that section of seven is fixed and we get curbs, but in the meantime.
We'll all be dead and buried by then.
Well.
So, I mean, do you have an idea what it would take to fix it?
I've thought up a few ways.
Why don't we take a look at it with Chad?
So, so-
I don't know. I'm not saying-
Can I make one more comment before we put it to an end? No, I, no, I thought you were just ending it. Well, I think maybe the state needs to be involved in this too. It's a state road. It's, it's not ours. We did repave the sidewalk, but that's because the sidewalk was pretty much gone. And that's probably where stuff was traveling in the hole. So, you haven't any discussions with the neighbors above about diverting that? Do you think that'd be prudent to check with them and see what they think too before we do anything?
No.
You don't?
I don't want, I don't wanna do, just gonna come, this is happening out because of the water flow. And I would, this is a-
Well, we've got an increased parking lot size at the snack bar, yes.
That happened about the same time.
About the same time.
Yeah. That's why I'm asking if we should talk, or you should talk to them too.
We need to talk, perhaps talk with the state and the sidewalk is within the state's right of, or US right of way. Is that correct?
Yep.
And it's our sidewalk, town sidewalk.
Yes, it is.
But it's up to the town to maintain it?
It's not up to the town to maintain people's properties and driveways though.
It's the same.
That's where, that's where I'm looking at, like, this is, I, I talked to someone who worked at that place when it was a service center, when there was a building in front of where your cars are, or where you, where you park your cars, way back. And said that when it rained, there was debris in the parking lot. So, you know, I-
But I didn't have that problem?
But it existed before the sidewalk was done. And I, I mean, it makes sense. It's downhill. But if it was something, if it was our road and we were, had some drainage issue, like if we'd repaved and something wasn't sloped right or whatever and we're causing that to be, I totally understand this. But this is not a direct cause from, from, I mean, the gravel's coming in from not the roadside or not the sidewalk side. It's meeting the sidewalk and then going that way. That, I, I don't see where it's going to be something that we even can fix because it's not even within our right of way or our property.
The sidewalk is ours, but it's not material from the sidewalk is washing down. It's on the-
Probably coming from above where they put the-
It is.
Well, you have three, or two driveways right there that are-
Yeah. You can see where it's washed out. I stopped there yesterday.
It's gonna get worse Friday, you know?
And, and go on what Mark said as far as talking to your neighbors. I mean, it's costing them money to have their driveway filled, come down and fill your driveway. So, it's to their advantage to mitigate the situation too.
At least be involved.
Or at least be involved. So, I mean, if it was me and my driveway kept washing away down to my neighbors and yeah, even if it's only every couple of years, I gotta bring in a load of gravel, that's still costing me money to fix it. So, I think, you know, my opinion, at least talk to your neighbors, you know, and say, listen, you know, this appears to be what's happened. You're losing your driveway, you know, it's ending up in my parking lot. Is there anything you can do to, you know, change the slope a little bit so the water, your driveway isn't washing down to mine? And at least go that route as a first step in the solution. And I mean, if you don't get anywhere there, then I guess maybe we re-look at it. But I would think, you know, cause it, I'm assuming it has kinda started since that big parking lot was put in. Roughly, cause that was roughly the time we did the sidewalks. All that was all about the same time.
If you look at the south side of the snack bar's parking lot, you can see the ruts where it's eroding.
Okay.
And it's silk type material.
So, it's traveling across Maseronis and it's getting down there.
Or it's part of Maseroni as well. I don't know, but you know the torrents that we've had.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, maybe on top of doing that, maybe we should just check with the state and see if there is anything they think they can do. Cause it is their road. It's not ours to maintain. So, I think between the two things, that would be how I look to go.
Yeah.
Does that sound realistic?
Yeah. I'm open to just a solution so that we don't-
Oh, and I think we all get that. And if it was clear, if it was our sidewalk washing into your driveway, then it would be a different thing, but it's not our, well, I don't think it's our sidewalk. So, you don't have chunks of tar in your driveway, so, uh.
So, can we leave it with you to talk to your neighbors and we'll see if we can talk to the state and see if there's something in between that? Okay, that's issue number one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Issue number two. You wanna wait for that?
Yeah, that's, that was, well, we don't, so just to remind everybody, this is still in public comments. We can't do it, you know? Probably already discussed it more than we should have and we can't take any action, but we do have that in executive to deal with the personnel.
So, we can talk about that then, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
One last, even, I wouldn't mind, cause I do have the equipment, even if it was like a catch bait, like a catch area, to clean out one spot rather than all over the parking lot.
Okay.
And that's one thing I thought of. Like even if there was just a catch at the top, when it comes down, sediment goes in there, I bring my tractor out, or the, fill it up. I'm fine with that.
But you can build a new roadway out behind your building and who cares?
Let us, let us ask the state.
Well, that would be, you'd have to get a permit from the state.
Yeah, that's, that's nothing we can do. You probably should talk to the other two, get involved.
My, it actually goes right up, cause the way the property, Maseronis driveways in my, but I'm not, I don't, probably my pins in the middle of their driveway over there and it goes back. So, I mean, but I don't, I get along with them. They're quick.
Well, I think, I think it's a good neighborly thing to have the discussion about what's happening.
Yeah.
Yes, and I'll do that.
Yeah. And then we can check with the state and see if there's anything there.
I appreciate that.
Just remember, it's really not town road, so we'll do what we can.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Nobody on, no, for public comment. Okay. Um, we have no old business. Errors and omissions from assessor's office. It was a name change only. So, that's pretty straightforward.
Lisa pretty much dropped it out, this memorandum that's pretty, pretty straightforward, so just name change only.
Yeah, okay. She just needs you to approve it.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I didn't put one in for signing, so Dave, can you chuck yours in there so that they can sign it, please?
Is there a signature on this?
No, they, she just likes to have somebody, one of them signed.
Yeah, I'll just stick it in.
Sorry, I forgot to do that.
Yeah, you've got it in your packet.
Oh, there it is.
You'll see there's some Lister cards attached.
You've got Lister cards attached.
Got two here. And it's just name changes?
Yes. There were family ones that through deaths or whatever were changed, I believe.
So, this is the new name that's on here? Okay. Gotcha.
So, it's two properties, right? Okay.
Okay, I see it down here. Okay.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, radar speed feedback sign location.
So, in your packet, you'll see an email from Joe Kelly from V-Trans to me. This is, this is the findings from when we, him and Chad and I actually went and looked at places to put the, the flashing speed sign. And I gotta say, I was impressed with him and that he convinced me why the thirty-five would work.
Okay.
So, I'll admit to that. I didn't think it would. So, and if you read this, they're actually going to put some new, um, some new signs in and so we'll get some posts that we can put them on, which will be nice. And this explains where they're going. So, one with, the one on the north end coming into, you know, the southbound lane is basically where the thirty-five mile an hour sign is now, the one we just trimmed out where you couldn't see, if you see it, it's, you can see like, and then they'll, they're gonna put a thirty, they're gonna actually increase the thirty-five mile an hour zone more, you know, northerly so that the cars will see, be in it quicker, which then they'll move, that'll move the forty back and stuff.
So, it would be down the hill, how far down the hill?
Almost like if you came out of Plains Road, you'd, you'd almost diagonally, like just south of the cemetery is where this, where it would be. So, it has to be within so many feet, within the thirty-five, then we have, the sign has to have, I think it says it in here. It has to have the thirty-five mile an hour sign on it, so that was what we figured if it was right there where it already is, so. And then, but you already have to be in the zone, so the zone would increase a little bit more.
So, yeah, but how far, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about where does the zone change? Midway down the hill, the bottom of the hill?
Um, let's see.
Cause it's based on topography.
In the southbound, the speed limit drops forty-five, thirty-five and upgrade. Due to the topography, there's only one five mile drop. Town install, it's in here somewhere. It'll be relocating the assembly northerly approximately twelve feet to the state location, so. Yeah, they'll be, they'll be moving it, I guess, twelve feet. I thought it was gonna go farther than that.
So, it's not being moved.
Yeah, well, yeah, I thought they were going up to almost like across from like where Windy-
Windy Hill?
Hill is. I thought that that's where it was gonna go. So, it's somewhere right down in there.
We're talking on the north side of town, correct?
Yeah, so southbound lane, northside town.
It says, in the northbound direction of US seven, the speed limit drops from fifty to thirty-five?
That's coming north.
That's northbound lane, so you're on the other end of town, Dan.
South end of town.
You're on the, you're on the Route three end.
Coming in from Mark's, it's fifty and then it drops thirty-five on top of the hill. So, that's the one they're gonna move like, it's gonna be in front, like, so like a yellow, there's like a couple houses right there. And then I think there's a yellow house and there's a utility pole right there. It's gonna be somewhere right around there. Yeah.
So, it'll be a ways before you pitch down.
Here it is, Dave. Here it is, Dave. Sorry, I was on the, so on the, up here, the first speed limit sign located and then next one as well is gates posting speed signs. Southbound traffic at the first speed limit forty mile an hour sign. And speed limit thirty-five signs, a second speed limit forty, a sign will be installed for southbound traffic just south of Hendy Lane.
South of Hendy Lane.
By JR's?
Right, right.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's almost across from Windy Hill.
Just as you start up the null.
Yeah. So, the thirty-fives will be right in there somewhere. So, they'll be on top of the hill and basically at the bottom of the hill.
The flashing sign will be on top of the hill.
Down here, on the southbound, north, on the south end of town, northbound lane. On the, on the southbound lane, north end of town, it's going to be somewhere between where the thirty-five is and Hendy Lane.
Okay, okay. So.
So, he did say he was gonna increase it a little bit.
I mean, human nature is if it's forty partway up the hill, you're gonna go forty all the way up the hill and then you're gonna let off as you crest the hill. That's just-
Well, and that's what-
Versus if it's down towards the bottom, you'll let off and coast to it and then go that speed up the hill.
Yeah.
So, putting the sign somewhere in the hill isn't gonna slow people down.
Going up the hill, it might.
Flashy.
No.
Take your foot off the gas and you get down to thirty-five.
No, if you see it at the bottom of the hill that it's thirty-five, you'll let your, take your foot off at the bottom of the hill and coast up the hill and go. But if it's, if you see it isn't, doesn't change till the top of the hill, you're gonna be going forty over the top of the hill, then let off.
That flashy sign might make them do it.
So, can I, can I make a suggestion? Can we just do what V-Trans is gonna let us do and see how it works? And then, and if it doesn't work, we'll-
That sounds good. Sounds good.
Come out and do, you'll send me with them and I'll tell them how it should be done?
I'll just let them know what your thoughts were.
Okay.
We don't need to take any action on this, correct?
He'll do a Zoom call with you.
Alright. We'll see how that goes. Okay, um, swim area.
Okay, so, so as you know, we had an issue at the beginning of the year with lifeguards and there was some confusion. I think we've figured it out, but a lot of the lifeguards that we have, actually most of them, were still in school. And, um, you know, we were like reaching out to people to see if there were other lifeguards in town. We have a few adult lifeguards, but I mean, they work too. So, we decided to check with, if you read down through this, there's, you know, um, the kids are going back to school here in another week or so. We're, it's not really cooling down. So, Liz reached out to the league and talked to Wade Major, who's our risk, our loss control guy, and he's great, about if we could, what their thoughts were if we had swimming open at your own risk versus having lifeguards on duty because we couldn't get them. So, in that last paragraph down here, you'll see that, I mean, I can read it for you too. It says, "Just wanted to summarize what we have reviewed. Certainly having lifeguards on duty when the swimming area is open is best practice. However, when that is not possible and it remains open for use without guards on duty, it must be communicated to the users through good signage. In addition to swim at your own risk, the sign should include language that alerts facility users that lifeguards are not present and facility users assume all responsibility for their own safety and those in their care." So, if we wanna keep this open, you know, through, like, I mean, our summers are getting longer and, um, I think we're gonna have to really consider, we're gonna have to consider this, so.
I think it's a good idea to, but also how's it going to be open? I noticed that even, even where you used to be able to slide between, you know, by the bridge, so they put a bunch of wire up over that, so you can't even get in.
How do you know that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Someone told her.
Well, if the gates are open, I mean, it'd still be open.
Would they leave, that's why I guess what I was asking, how, what that, what that would look like.
I think the gate would probably not be locked, but not like wide open, cause you don't want a two-year-old running in there.
Leave the gate shut.
Leave the gate shut, but it could be popped open.
Well, we'll still be using the rec. I mean, when do summer camps get done?
This week, uh, next week. So, next week, summer camps get done. Um, the twenty-fourth is the absolute last day. We can get lifeguards.
Okay. Which is, I mean, it is early weather wise. I mean, geez, sometimes into early October is nice to swim.
Pools the heck out of it. Just put a lot of signs up and put it on our website, make it very clear.
Do you guys wanna just make a motion just so we have kind of a, you know, to just, that we can move forward with that? Okay.
I'll make a motion, we'll see what will it?
Alright.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just put a lot of signs up.
I think we already, we already have a pretty big swim at your own risk sign is on the fence.
We have a lot of them in storage from when COVID, because we didn't have lifeguards during COVID. So, we have signs available. It's just the risk of having people not paying attention to their kids while in there.
And we'll, we'll post it out too. We can put it on the website and, I mean, I'll call, I can call the paper if we wanna just do a notice or something.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
You know, we got it.
And it's in print.
And it's in print, yeah. Yeah.
Alright, uh, town office hours.
So, I think this got brought up a couple of years ago before me. But we've been watching the, and actually on the bottom of my town manager report, I did write something on here. So, we've been tracking the office hours on Thursdays when everyone's here till six o'clock. Nothing happens. Yeah, and I mean, honestly, Fridays are pretty quiet. Of course, the town clerk's office is, is, you know, close to the public on Friday. Nothing happens. Yeah, and I mean, honestly, Fridays are pretty quiet. Of course, the town clerk's office is, is, you know, closed to the public on Friday, so it's just us down here. Um, but.
Is the town clerk caught up yet where that can be open or is that gonna be forever?
I actually talked to the town clerk today because we had tax bills that went out last week and water bills were, you know, were due today, so.
Yeah, yes.
Friday, Ann was busy. Um, I said, you know, when we have these types of situations, can you please be open so, you know, people?
Right, that's not, you're.
Because we hate to not tell people we can't take their money. I mean, and they can to a point, but.
People get frustrated. I can't take credit cards. I don't have the software. I don't have the ability. I can take their checks. I can take their cash. I usually stamp them or sign my name, say paid, check number, and sign my name. And then I take them into the town clerk's office, um, as I can, you know, but it's, it's frustrating for the people showing up. And it seems like last Friday, it was constant, ever flow, and I was trying to do select board packets and then deliver them, so that's when Mr. Garrow came back with his check, 'cause he had told me he was gonna come back on Monday, so I left to deliver select board packets so that I didn't have to stay till three, then deliver select board packets, 'cause it takes quite a while to do that. And then it was just like, I got back and Brent's like, I found out Brent had come back and I was like, I needed to take care of things.
So, so that's one thing, and another thing is like, most of us don't even go to lunch, you know, we don't take an hour lunch. I mean, we're all, we just run down to Komodo's or Keith's and have lunch here. So that was one of the things of looking at hours, if we stayed, if we stayed open Monday through Thursday, Thursday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, and then Friday, eight to three, we're still. Sorry, that came in, that card just came in kinda hot. Again. Um, and I just, as I said, we've been tracking inflow of people after four-thirty, and we can do it on, um, on the, the computer in the office. It'll say when they've waited on someone last. So we've watched it quite a bit and it's, it's pretty quiet. Um, and some, some weeks, we've had nobody come in after, after three o'clock somewhere. I remember one week where like, it was like two-thirty. I mean, not that we'd close at two-thirty, but there certainly are like, there are times, like mornings are usually the busier part of the day. Lunchtime is, is, there's a kind of a steady flow. Usually like right after school kinda time, and then by four o'clock, we're pretty quiet.
Yeah.
Um, so, and like I said, most of us don't take a lunchtime hour. We'll just work through, um, and if needed, we can stay open later for like taxes, dog licenses, whatever stuff. I mean, obviously, if we need to be here, we're gonna be here, 'cause we hold meetings in here, you know, all the time and, um, but it'd be nice if people didn't have to stay here till six o'clock on Thursdays. Any thoughts?
I have no problem, but I'd really like to know when the town clerk's gonna be back open on Fridays.
We don't really have any control over that, though.
Well, I think we need to ask. Are we caught up now so we can do that? 'Cause it just ends up on somebody else's desk.
Well, I know.
Supposed to be temporary to get caught up.
I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I just, I just statutorily, she can set her own office hours.
So I guess we'll have to talk to her.
Well, she did come to the board originally, so, I mean, I can certainly talk to her. I mean, I did talk to her.
Would you at least, yeah, absolutely. Possibility if we're close enough where we can start that again?
Absolutely.
I think that's actually more important to be.
Yeah.
Well, it kinda sounds like she's taking people in anyway.
Right. I mean, the town, the town clerk's office is definitely sees way more traffic than we do, you know? We have to disgruntle people on our end.
You do.
But, um, yeah, you know, it's so, I can certainly run that by her.
Let's ask at least. I don't have any problem with the hour change either.
I mean, obviously, if, if it becomes a problem, we can revisit it, you know, but, I mean, we've been watching this for like a year and it's like, you know.
Well, but I would think, you know, a couple of weeks before dog license.
Yes.
And same with taxes and those two times of the year. I don't know if there's another time of year that's busy other than those two.
Well, I mean, voting, obviously, you know, because we're, yeah, that's a whole different thing.
Yeah, so as long as there's some flexibility in, in it, which you were already stating there would be, right? So.
So I think as long as they're willing to open back up, if they're caught up, so they can open back up on Fridays, we can cut Thursdays back other than, you know, at a couple of specific times during the year when we open up so people can get in.
Or be ready to stay open for an extra fifteen minutes, 'cause you have people here.
And we, and we'll do that.
We're shutting now.
I mean, like.
We do that now anyways.
Well, I, I think it needs to be said, though, to everybody, that, listen, we'll do this, but if we have people that are here and wanna go, we're not just saying we're closed at four-thirty. We're gonna stay and help them.
We won't do that.
No, well, that's sometimes.
No, I get it, I get it. You know, like, I know Monday, Monday I have someone coming up from the health department to talk about some, some hazard mitigation stuff and I don't think you'll be here till four-fifteen, so I know we'll be, and I'm not, I don't like to lock the door if I'm here. You know, even if it's after hours, I think it's important that if there's a car here, the door's unlocked and lights are on, and I think we all feel that way. So, um, yeah, okay.
You don't need a motion on it. You just.
No, we can just do it. Yeah, yeah, cool. Thank you.
Yep. All right, any questions on the orders?
So you got thunder towing, you got Durango computer mount, five, over five thousand dollars? What's that?
That was to outfit the new Durango. It took forever, so.
Oh, so we're just, oh, wow.
The one with the engine that's gone.
The one with the engine.
The computer works fine, though.
The computer, well, you know.
We'll sit in the garage and call each other.
Okay.
Grumble, grumble, yeah.
Oh, well, here, might as well start the.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, this thing from Lisa, I'll just, just gonna be sitting on top for you guys to sign, okay?
That's all signature stuff?
Yeah, I gotta give this to, um.
She doesn't sign the thirtieth.
Okay.
She signs the seventeenth.
Where's the seventeenth one?
It's in there. 'Cause I need the pair also.
Is there any comments on?
Um, I heard nothing but good things about it. It was well attended. I, I was, I had to go to the punk stock in Brandon first, 'cause my kid's band was playing there and they were great. But, um, I don't know, I got there at like six o'clock and there were still a lot of people there, and then I guess they had to actually use the, the overflow for, um, parking for the fireworks. So, um, yeah, I mean, it seemed like everyone had, had a, you know, a great time.
How did the?
There was a nice spread on the reporter today on it, too.
Oh, nice.
Oh, was there?
Yeah.
Can't find any place to sign it anyway?
Just sign it on the bottom, Dave. Is that that memorandum thing?
Oh, we are supposed to sign that?
Just, just sign the, yeah, that's what I just said.
You pick a spot.
Just sign on the bottom somewhere. It's just for Lisa, anyway.
It doesn't go anywhere except for Lisa's files to show if she ever got audited.
I've tried telling it down.
You're just so flamboyant.
I am very flamboyant. Oh, boy.
You're off the table, man.
Boy, I hope Tom's back for the next meeting, 'cause.
He's home.
I know, he's home and he, surgery went well.
It went well?
Yeah.
Did anybody talk to him since he got home?
Not, no, not.
I was gonna call him and ask if he wanted a ride.
Yeah? The case is over, let's go.
No.
See, it's not true.
Well, that's what you claim he does. I mean, I've never seen him do anything like that.
I wouldn't.
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure I could still do that.
Well, bend over?
I've been three weeks with no back pain and I'm very excited about it, so.
Excuse me.
Dare we ask what you're doing with no back pain?
Lots of bourbon. No, um, I started PT again, but doing a lot of street training, so, and that's, it's.
Yeah.
So. And I'm just gonna keep doing it. I wanna get back on my mountain bike. That's really what I need to do. I need to.
Get rid of your extra person.
Get rid of my town manager fellow physique. Yeah, it's time.
Good luck with that.
All right.
Yeah, exactly. I miss being in the woods, though. I like, I really like mountain biking a lot.
All right, let's recess, um, select board and open as liquor board. And now we have the, uh, special events permit for Friday, hopeful, or Saturday, I mean.
Friday and Saturday.
Is it Friday and Saturday?
I think the.
Or Saturday and Sunday?
I think the beer is just for Saturday, though.
Okay.
That was one that Helen and I already think pre-approved, right? Was that the one?
Yeah, so we just have to hope, keep our fingers crossed that it's not a washout with the weather, though. It's clearly.
This is the one at Village Farm, right? The Jeep one?
The Jeep event.
Yeah, yeah.
The Jeep event?
Yeah, Jeep event. And Liam Brew is gonna be having beer there, beer tent.
So, and by the way, since we're talking about liquor, the, um, Hillside did a great, or Hilltop did a great job at the fair, uh, Pittsburgh Day. Um, yeah, they were, they were happy. They, but, um, it was, it went well. So.
I know. There was never, it wasn't like a, I don't know what I wanna say.
No, I mean, there were.
It was never really like full of people in there. Every time I looked over, you know, it was just.
It was like six people when I got there, you know? Five of the six were on the fire department. No, it was.
I would've gotten in if I remembered. I've completely forgot, so.
Yeah, they were excited to be there, too. I know that Andy was happy, you know, that they, they would definitely, they'll definitely do it again.
Oh, that's good.
So, yeah.
No, it was a good day.
So we don't need to act on that one, then? We just need to look at it?
I know. Do we have to make a motion on that permit?
You can, it's already been approved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Doesn't hurt.
Want these in?
Come out of liquor board, back into select board, and then yes, I would take the motion to go into executive in accordance with one VSA three-one-three A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the municipality where person involved a substantial disadvantage to discuss pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body is or may be a party, to include the town manager. And then we also have, what did we also add? Would it be different, um?
I'll write them out.
Contracts?
Let me go get my book.
Yeah, 'cause we have one legal, one personnel, and one contract, so I don't know if that's different, um, VSA numbers. It must be.
But we won't make that until after the first executive session. Let's open the door and do the other one. So I'll write it all down.
Okay.
Have to say them every time. It's fine, it's fine.
No one will be here after our first one. Anyway, so we have a motion to go into executive?
Motion to go into executive.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.